We'll call the school committee of October 26th to order. Our first item that we have on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of September 28th, 2009. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
I just have one correction.
Please.
On number five, school committee members, I don't believe Mr. Peterson attended the second orientation. I think it was the first day of school orientation or something along those lines.
Maybe schooled instead of second.
He always has to repeat everything.
All right. Getting credit from you guys, you know, you gotta get in there as many times as possible.
With that correction, I'm good for a second.
All right, we have a second. Can I call for the vote, please?
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, four yes, one absent. The minutes pass. This time we'll go into our new business. We have the 84 Campaign for Smokeless Teens. Come on up. Are you all by yourself?
Yes.
Sorry for the way I'm dressed. I just came from a student council event for the elementary school, so.
Got a little Halloween going on down there, don't you?
Yep, basically some trick-or-treating.
That's fine.
So, last year we were state champions. We won the state championship or whatever for the 84. This year we have a grant for $4,000 and we basically have all the money, all the things we need for this. I'm just giving you guys an update of what's going on. We have statewide kickoff in the training, which happens November 7th, this coming of April 7th, Saturday. It'll be from 8:30 to 4:00 and it's in the Worcester area. We send four kids representatives from the 84 and they get this training on how to promote being smokeless and they get more training on how to get more surveys for people in Oxford, anybody who sells cigarettes and stuff like that, we survey them. And we're trying to stop people selling cigarettes to kids underage and stuff, so it's kinda great. We have the Great American Smokeout, which it's optional, but we're choosing to do it because we have the means to do it. That's basically like, we're gonna go to the middle school and high school and do a whole bunch of activities for positive morals and stuff like that. Like, it's gonna be a really great thing. Then we have Kick Butts Day, which is a mandated thing where we go to the State House in Boston and showcase what we've done throughout the year. And that's later on in the year. That's in March.
Okay.
So, we have that. Our funding, it is $4,000. The grant period is September 28th to June 14th. And, well, that's basically it. And we're doing a lot for it and we have a very great group this year.
That's great. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the committee? Terrific. How many kids are involved in your?
We have about 20.
That's great.
And I'm the secretary, by the way, sorry. I'm the secretary, I keep all the minutes and I'm kind of in charge of making sure everybody knows what's going on, so.
Marisol, you wanna just state your name?
Oh, my name is Marisol Rosa, sorry. Grade 12.
Thank you. Just for the record. Marisol, well, thank you for keeping us updated and let us know how it's going along.
Yes.
Very proud of you guys.
Thank you.
You should have done.
At this time, Mr. Baggett? Have a new business for an annual band trip, I hear. Come on in.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's nice to be back here again.
It's nice to have you.
It seems like it was just a few minutes ago that I was asking for permission to go last year on a trip. I don't recall, was I able to fill you in on the successes that we had at a school committee meeting or?
I did, yes, you did come back with.
Okay. We, just to encapsulate it a little bit, we had our best success to date. We were invited to participate in the Festivals of Gold at, in New York at, not Madison Square Garden, Lincoln Center. This is extended to those groups that acquire gold in the festivals, the highest ratings. The band and the chorus both were able to get that. So, we'd like to try for more excitement this year and more challenges for the band and chorus and the jazz band. We are tentatively planning, with your approval, to go to Pennsylvania the week of May 14th, I believe that's either a Thursday or Friday. We'd like to ask permission to be out of school from Thursday of that week through Sunday. And also to receive permission to do our normal fundraising for it, to offset the costs of it. Which, by the way, will be about $350 per student.
And how many students would be going with you, Mr. Baggett?
Fifty-five, excuse me, 50, 51. The bus seats, 55. And we've never had to turn anyone away. It's amazing how that works.
And you have 51 students, how many chaperones go with you?
Three.
Three. Any comments, concerns from the committee? Well, everybody must love this trip.
Us, you are.
I know, I know. That hearing, does anyone wish to put a motion to approve the?
Move to approve the trip as long as he stays in contact with the building administration as far as what fundraisers, I mean, that's just protocol, it's standard, as long as it's in our motion. Mr. Baggett, I know he's been around long enough, he understands that, to approve the fundraising and as long as it works out with the high school and you're not interfering with anybody else. So moved to support the trip.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Terrific. Can I call for a vote, please?
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, four firm, one absent. And please keep us posted because you did very well last year and soon you will do great things again.
We have the highest expectations this year. The chorus is probably the best I've worked with since I started at Oxford High School this year. It's just, gives me goosebumps every time I go in on Monday after school for their rehearsals. That's the group that rehearses for the trip, is the after-school group. And I'm going back to a rehearsal now. We have a production on this Thursday of, the theater class has written, produced, and directed, and just done everything for a Halloween spectacular. It's Night at the Halloween Asylum in the auditorium at 7:00. Admission's $3 for everybody unless you're a preschooler and then it's gonna cost you a nickel to get that. So, everyone's invited.
Terrific.
Now, the band is the pit band, so please come.
It's wonderful. We will. We look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And please keep us posted.
Thank you very much.
Our next item on our agenda is our MCAS presentation by our building principals. I am going to start with Mr. Wells because I promised to turn it around, start the high school. So, I will let the high school present first.
Please.
I think I usually start the elementaries. I'll put you in the seat.
Thank you very much. Just a point of information, the 84 campaign, the advisor is Dixie Lawrence, who spends a lot of time helping to coordinate the program with the students and really does a good job keeping the enthusiasm up. And of course, Mr. Baggett, the band and the chorus, their record speaks for themselves, so they set the bar pretty high and I'm sure that they're gonna do quite well in their competition this spring.
That's terrific.
I'm sure all of you have had an opportunity to take a look at the MCAS. The presentation is somewhat vanilla in that it's very clear, concise, and to the point. If you take a look, there were 118 students in this past group of students that took the ELA, 115 in math, there were 121 in the physics. Of course, they're given at different times, consequently, a variation in number based on illness and absences outside of school. On page two, you have the three-year tracker, which essentially gives a comparative analysis of the MCAS results from '07 to the present. And please, at any point in time, if you have questions prior to the very brief ending, I'll be more than happy to answer those. I think the real telltale pages, on page three, when you look at the MCAS result comparison, it's broken down by the proficient and advanced categories on the left side, the needs improvement and failure category on the right side. And that essentially is the reason why, over the course of the last three years, we've continued to make adequate yearly progress. So, as your proficient and advanced have increased, or Rs have increased, consequently the failure category and needs improvement categories have decreased. Page four is the Adequate Yearly Progress Data Summary. And if you look, I believe all of yours should be in red, '07, '08, '09, actually going back to '01, Oxford High School has successfully continued to reach adequate yearly progress. The last page, when you look at the academic support grant, monies that we receive from the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education. We provide one-on-one tutoring. Mrs. Olney does an outstanding job, a former teacher at Oxford High School. She works one-on-one with a lot of our students. They are also assessed in their academic labs, sometimes in Phys Ed, Wood, and Art. Up until November, tutoring is focused primarily on the juniors and the seniors that are in need of taking it again in November for the retest. And then after November through May, it focuses primarily on the sophomores. Students are chosen primarily, we look at the eighth grade MCAS results in terms of looking at their warning and needs improvement, those students, trying to focus on them. We look at their current performance in math as well as their current placement in math. This year, biology, we have after-school services delivered by one of our teachers here on staff. Under other, you'll notice it says, "English, Math, and Science Teachers Are Provided With Student Results Through the Data Warehouse." Mr. Nugent is able to extrapolate the strengths and weaknesses of the students, target on the weaknesses, make the teachers very well aware of what the weaknesses on individual students are so they can target those, most especially in the one-on-one tutoring that takes place during school with Mrs. Olney and after school. If you go a little bit further down, you look at the educational proficiency plans for this class. 13 students in ELA, 14 in math, and 13 of those 14 in math are also in ELA, so it's And again, the information, it's extrapolated through data. The data warehouse provides us the opportunity, through guidance, to put the proficiency plans together.
Any comments, concerns? Mr. Spitz?
I just would like to know through the chair, one of the biggest pieces of this MCAS AYP improvement each year is that we put the right people in the right positions to continue this improvement. Do you feel you have a plan in place to make sure that we do have the right people assigned to each of the areas so that these children are gonna continue to meet these standards each year?
Well, obviously, from year to year, as the ceiling level continues to rise, the difficulty also increases as well. Right now, we have what I believe, at this point in time, the teachers in place that are necessary. Certainly, reviewing, as I'm in the process of reviewing, AP teachers and students and their successes or failures, we would do the same thing here. At this point, I think if it's not broke, you don't need to fix it, but the answer to your question is yes.
Comments, concerns?
I just have one question for you, Mr. Wells, and I know I spoke briefly with Mr. Himmelberger. Every year, I always look at these and I always think how unfair it is to judge one year's class results to the next because it's like taking your oldest child and comparing it to the next child and they may have different strengths and weaknesses. Is it possible, maybe perhaps next month, for you to gather some data for us to watch, say, the class, the class of 2001, and see how they have done all through their test results, the big ones like grade eight, 10? So, we can see, have they moved on this journey? Has more gone from the needs improvement to the proficient or advanced? So, we can watch just one grade level, their journey through this maze of MCAS? Because I think that tells a lot as a school district, if we watch how the numbers hopefully come back up and we become top-heavy instead of taking last year's 10th grade and the year before that, because different kids have different strengths and weaknesses. So, I was wondering if we might be able to get some of that, just to show us as a district how we're moving.
So, you'd like to cross-reference all the test results from, say, grade four all the way up through grade 10?
Of one, one class.
One particular class.
Like the class? Right, exactly. So that there's consistency.
Right. Because I know we do, we measure, each year, we measure a group of students that really are apples to oranges, although it tells what we're teaching, but it doesn't tell what strengths they may have particularly. So, it'd be interesting to know if perhaps when they first started out in grade four, maybe 40% were on the top side. And as they leave, have we increased that bottom percentage up so that we do have more that are advanced and proficient?
Understood.
Am I okay on that?
Again, I know last year I did mention, I wouldn't say champion, but I did mention last year, I think it's a universal problem across the Commonwealth when you take a look at, especially junior high school results, it's kind of an unfair comparison. Because high schools that do not necessarily have magic dusts that all of a sudden, in the course of one point five years, these students are able to understand everything that's necessary in order to pass. I think sometimes what happens is it's a difference between practice and game time, if I could use athletics as an analogy. I don't think students always put their best foot forward during practice, but when they know it's game on, for example, grade 10, and my graduation depends on this, they seem to step to the plate. It's an issue that certainly, when I was in Spencer, we had, and when meeting with the Southern Wisconsin League principals, 13 other high schools, we all talk about that and we're all in the same exact boat, you know? And I think that certainly is one of them. In terms of adequate yearly progress, you know, another kind of good analogy through athletics is, you know, if a football team is senior-laden and they win 10 games or 11 games and they lose zero, what do they use for adequate yearly progress the following year when all of those kids have graduated? You know, they need to at least repeat in order to maintain the same standard and sometimes, obviously, that's very difficult.
No, I totally agree with you on it. And having children in the system, you know when they take it serious. I think they tend to take the MCAS, in my opinion, very well at the beginning because they're so young and they're like, "I've gotta do well." And then, like you said, at the very end. Somewhere in between, they start to realize, like, "I gotta try hard," but until the accountability comes, which I think is in grade 10. So, it's kinda interesting to watch their journey and that's kind of what I was looking for, the stats on that.
We should be able to do that without an issue.
That'd be wonderful. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you for asking for that again. I've asked for that for years, all the way back to when Mrs. Schur was Guidance Counselor or Director here. The only problem is, and we're taking a different direction, in fact, I'll bring it up later, but Mass Association and School Committee's Legislative Committee is meeting again November 5th, our second meeting. And we are proposing and trying to get some different legislation proposed because unfortunately, and the Association has taken the stance now that we're gonna support the MCAS, it's here to stay and we know it, and the schools, Oxford's done a good job in trying to support it and move on with it. But like Pat said, the only problem is, we're comparing 10th grade every year and the state's gotta take a different stand also. They haven't yet and don't. They look at the 10th grade results, doesn't matter what these kids did in fourth grade or eighth grade, it's what they did in 10th grade and they compare 10th grade to 10th grade every year. And we can't seem to get through to them that every class has a little different structure from socio-economical to educationally to family backgrounds and everything else. And we are working diligently on your behalf for that, but it's a long, slow process and we're making very slow progress with it. So, any help we can get from you, we would appreciate it also. It's not fair to compare last year's 10th grade to this year's 10th grade, it's a whole different class altogether. And I agree with Pat, I've asked for that numerous times over the years. Unfortunately, Mr. Wells, it makes a little more work for you because your forms are all in there for 10th grade. So, in order to track a class, you're gonna have to pick one, go back to the eighth grade class and see where they stood or what progress we've made with them into the 10th grade MCAS at this point.
I certainly won't be doing it alone. I will work.
Yeah.
But quite honestly, I think the availability of those numbers, that it's probably pretty relatively available.
But it is a serious problem, like you said, because to judge the AYP on it, where sometimes we fluctuate, especially at the middle school level, again, it's not fair to judge that class against last year's class, and you have to see where they came from and how far they've come up the ladder.
Well, I'm not positive, but I believe the date is 2014 through NCLB that everyone is supposed to be proficient in the country.
Right.
And all due respect, people shouldn't hold their breath for that time to come because it's almost literally impossible for that to happen.
That might be in Nostradamus books somewhere, that day.
2012.
Yes.
But any input, or if you have any suggestions before the 5th, you'd gladly get them to me and we'd entertain looking at them, all right?
Absolutely.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And that's, thank you for getting us that information.
You'll have it for the next meeting.
Thank you, thank you. Next, can we have the middle school, please? And I know you have a lot to report and I know you have very good things to report, so this is a big moment, yes. I won't steal your thunder.
First of all, just to answer the question that Mr. Peterson asked about tracking a particular group through all the years, with the new data warehouse software that we have, we are able to track that by class instead of comparing this year's 7th grade to last year's 7th grade. You will be able to take a class and track from the time they first started taking MCAS until the current, the most recent reporting out.
That's awesome.
It is offered to us by the Department of Education and it is available. And we have all had training on it over the past several months, but how proficient we all are at it.
Well, now we have a test subject, here we go.
But.
1993 to now is very slow and moving forward to help anybody with anything.
Right.
And that's the state situation, not yours.
Right. And unfortunately for us, the data that the state reports does compare this year's 8th grade with last year's 8th grade with the year before's 8th grade.
Right.
But to go back to what you had to say, Mrs. Dewidzik, we do have very good news to report at the middle school. I'm sure Mr. Himmelberger has informed you, and I know it is now on our Fusion website, that we were in the appeal process and found out last Wednesday that our appeal was upheld. We had reported discrepancy in the reporting of data from the state and we were in fact correct. And so, we did in fact make AYP in all areas, all grades, and all subgroups. So.
That's very good.
It was a very nice day on Thursday at the middle school. There was cake all around and high fives and clapping and cheering and, as it should be, because they have worked very hard for that. It was not for lack of trying that we had not made it in the past, but for oftentimes small numbers and subgroups kept us from that. And as you know, we need to make adequate yearly progress in all grades, all subjects, and all subgroups. And we do test the most number of children at the middle school. We test every grade in multiple areas, so we do the most reporting out. I did put together a rather lengthy report for you and because I do test every grade and every level and subject, your report from the middle school is longer than probably some of the others. At the time that I started assembling it, we were still in the appeals process and so on page two of your report, that is kind of a, I don't know what color, green, seafoam green perhaps, that, and at that time, we were still waiting to hear for our appeal. We have nothing in writing, we only have verbal from the Department of Education that we have prevailed. And so, the places that report that we are in structuring year two, we are still there, that is still our accountability status. We need to make AYP for two consecutive years. So, even though we've made it, we're halfway out of there, our accountability status does remain as restructuring. If you would then turn to some of the other, perhaps the graphs by grade and by subject, and I think you've had an opportunity to look at them, we have noticeable increases in student scores for the proficient and advanced and on your graphs, they are the blue on the left-hand side. And we, in some cases, have double-digit improvement on the left side of your graph and they would begin, I believe for you, on page 16 and following, that, because I have a lot of grades and subjects, I have a lot of pages. And they, what we wanna see in any of the graphs that are portrayed here is the growth, you want to see the blue bars and the bar graphs going up and you wanna see on the right side of the graph, the red and pink to be descending, because the red and pink are the needs improvement and warning. We wanna see those go down as we are seeing the advanced and proficient increase. In several areas, we have double-digit improvement on those graphs and at all grade levels and in all subjects, we have done remarkably well. In some grades, the improvement was very, very significant and in all, it was certainly noteworthy and toward the aggregate helped to get us where we wanted to be. On page 21, which is the science and technology, that is the perfect example of what we would like a graph to look like, with all of the increases on the left and the decreases on the right side. And for some of those improvements, we had posted as much as 26% improvement, taking the top, the improvement in proficient and advanced, and then the decrease in warning and needs improvement. So, that is, while there are many, many graphs in those pages, the grade five, science and technology is really what we like the graphs to look like. If you go to page 22, we put together a graph that compares the 2008, 2009 data with the surrounding school districts. And if you look at the 2009 data, in the aggregate, our ELA and our math both improved 11% in the aggregate. That means everybody put together. And in science, we improved by 9%. If you look at the other school districts in the area, you'll see that we have posted far more significant gains than some of the other school districts in the neighboring communities. Compared to 2008, we were kind of bringing up the rear and in the 2009 data, we are leading the pack. So, due in part to the initiatives and strategies that we've implemented and basically the hard work of teachers and students, cooperation of parents. So, we also have listed for you the percentages and numbers of students in some of our reportable subgroups and also we have included the per pupil spending, which we are, you know, a little bit lower than some, however, we were able to rise above that challenge and to be able to still post significant gains. And also, if you look at the teacher-student ratio as well. And so, what we have done through the Parent Advisory Council and part of our school improvement plan, our initiatives were listed on page 23 and 24 of this report. And certainly, we have discovered that, to our pleasure, they have worked and we were able to post significant gains. Certainly, we will continue to sustain those initiatives and strategies and perhaps to build in a few more to target a few areas that we still could bolster our scores either in the aggregate or in subgroup areas. We certainly have, one of the things that we had done significantly across grades five and six was the practice of cloning or the appearance of teachers taking the tests and problems and examples from their math and ELA and reformatting them so that they looked like questions look on MCAS. So that their weekly tests or their chapter tests looked very much like an MCAS problem or an open response question. They got in the practice of using vocabulary that's used in the instructions. They were in the habit of making multi-part questions because we had found that in the past, children would answer maybe the first part and miss the second or third part of the question. Either they weren't used to the format or they gave up too easily, so it became very standard practice in grades five and six to have multi-part questions on all of their tests and quizzes and for them to look very much like the questions look on MCAS. And that, we are hoping to expand to grades seven and eight this year as well. Grades five and six significantly used word walls in their classrooms instead of the more traditional. more traditional spelling test that's given weekly. We would like to see that expand as well. We have used very extensively this year and last, our media center with all of the new technology and computers, and over the summer, we were able to add another computer lab at the middle school, complete with a smart board and an LCD projector. If you check on our calendar, you can see all the yellow in the mornings, and that's all of the technology that is signed out. So all of these things together, there probably is no one magic pill that made all of this work, but certainly all of these strategies together have helped us to post significant gains. We certainly will continue those and any that we determine through focus groups on our staff that we believe would help us. One of the things we're working on further this year is power standards, and also to use more of data warehouse to be able to disaggregate data, to identify areas of strength and areas of weaknesses, so that we then can begin our remediation. This past school year, we used Study Island extensively, to the point that we had a monthly challenge, the top scoring student at each grade level was able to select a lunch of their choice from P and D Pizza, and each morning, we would update who had the highest scores and who was farthest ahead, and became competition between students, and, you know, everybody has the same opportunity to log on and accumulate your time and hours. And so it is, there was a change actually this morning, so apparently someone spent a lot of time over the weekend doing Study Island, because we have a new leader in, I think it's grade five. I think we also have a new leader in grade seven. So on Wednesday, they will get to choose their, we'll announce the winners, they'll choose their lunch, and it will be delivered on Thursday, and we do that every month. We also are into year three of MAP testing, and for many of our students, that is the predictor of how successful they will be on MCAS. So it is an early intervention type of program that will help us identify where we need to focus and what we need to do to remediate. So all of those strategies will remain in place, and hopefully, when we sit before you next year at this time, we will be able to tell you that we have removed ourselves from accountability status, and that truly would be a wonderful thing.
We'll have a party here then, right?
Well, teachers and staff and students think that when we get to that point, the cake that we had last Thursday would not be sufficient, that we really should have something much more festive and elaborate, so they were suggesting a pig roast, but I don't really know that that's in the budget, so, but that is what we have to present, and I know there is a lot, so if you had specific questions, I could perhaps answer those for you instead of throwing on here at you.
Thank you. Comments, concerns? Mr. Peterson?
I applaud you, and I know you're working diligently over there and making great strides, but I really still have some great concerns for this eighth grade math and science class. Math and science has been at the forefront for MCAS, but we don't seem to be making the great strides there. We still seem to have a lot of needs improvement and warning, failure warning situations. I'm concerned about that eighth grade class.
And as I think Mrs. Dewitzick said, we do have, we're in the unfavorable position of being where they're no longer still intrigued as in lower grades, and there's really no high stakes for them. It's not an excuse certainly for us as the teachers and the administrators, however, for some of our students, it is kind of more difficult to motivate than in some of the other positions. And it is not that we have given up, certainly the competition on Study Island, posting of the Lexile scores to each student's planner, and their MAP scores to try and get parent buy-in and support. And as Mr. Wells, you have asked him to do, to go back and take a particular class, we could do the same with grade eight and see what they've done, and then in a couple of years from now, see how they do when they're in grade ten.
I'd kind of like you to do that, because this is a crux for them transferring to this building next year, and if they're that, if they're not behind in math and science, I'm concerned where they're going to fit in here.
I'm not sure that they necessarily are behind or they don't bother to answer some of the questions because they require more writing, some of the open response questions some students leave blank, to the disappointment of teachers who say, "We just did that two weeks ago, they should have known that as well as they know their own name," and some choose to leave them blank. Unfortunately, we are in the unenviable situation as many other middle schools are, because we don't have that high stakes. There is no consequence in middle school, unfortunately, and it's very real to them by the time they reach tenth grade that my high school diploma is resting on this now.
Mrs. Hackett, did you notice, just to that, your mapping, your grade eight last year that would have been here on these stats, their mapping tests, which I think the mapping still intrigued them, it's kind of a different testing, did those numbers in math coincide with MCAS, or did you see a really a difference so you can kind of assume or not assume something?
Last year was the first time for the then-eighth grade to have taken it, so the novelty was there the first time. The second and third time, it maybe did not have as much novelty, however, it was still something that was pretty quick to generate results. Most things with technology seem to intrigue them, and the results are instant, whereas by the time they got the results from MCAS, they weren't even still at the middle school anymore.
Did you find their math grades and mapping last year significantly low, that would, you know, weren't that, or were they?
Not significantly low, but similar to what they demonstrated here. They're not that unrelated. MAP testing, measures of academic progress has shown, and it is aligned to our standards. In any state where they produce the program, it is aligned to state standards, and so it is probably our best predictor. And while, and they took the first window of it in the fall, yes, it was new to them and they were clicking on, and, oh, this is great, you get a sticker with your score on it, you get your Lexile, you know how well you're going to do, and so the novelty was still there.
Mr. Peterson?
The situation with the cloning too, we're probably a little behind, we should have been doing this a while ago on cloning of certain things in MCAS. My concern is that we don't go too far the other end of the spectrum with it, and all you're doing is teaching to the MCAS, and then we lose our critical thinking and other processes in the classroom as well.
As far as that, we are teaching a standards-based education, and the test is based on the standards, so even if we were teaching to the test, we're teaching the standards, so there's really not a disconnect there.
Mrs. Coonan?
I think having, if we could get the same information as we asked Mr. Wells from the, you know, the present eighth grader from fourth grade on, I think that that's probably going to show us a lot.
This is really the-
And also do that with MAP, the MAP testing as well, or?
Not to the extent that we could produce a bar graph the way we can with data warehouse for MCAS. They have talked about it when we went to the training, the possibility of different school districts adding in other testing that, but at this point, it has not been added to the state's portion of data warehouse.
That might be something in the future, and see how they align.
That's interesting.
But if you look at their MAP scores, and for the majority of the children, they're still in the same range with their MCAS scores.
May I ask, when did the science and technology, when was that added into their MCAS? How long have they been taking the science and technology?
Four grade, which grade?
Like grade eight, we were looking at this, so how many science and technology have they taken in? I thought, was it, is it two years that we've been taking?
They've been taking them since oh-six.
So three, now, yeah.
Oh-nine was the fourth year they took them. Yes, math and ELA were the frontrunners, and then as they added in, then social studies, and then science and technology, and last year, grade five did not take social studies at the last minute, that was kind of pulled from the program.
Any other questions for the middle school? Well, thank you very much, Mrs. Hackett and Mr. Milner, for coming in and giving us, and we would look forward to maybe the information that Mrs. Coonan had asked for to go through that, because that does help us look at the whole district, so we appreciate, and this was an awful lot of work, and it's very well.
For your evening reading.
Yes.
Stay with it, we appreciate the improvement, and that we won the-
And congratulations to everyone there. And now our elementary school, would Mrs. Fournier and Mr. Yvonne want to come up together? We always team you up. I'm going to stick you out on a limb all alone, huh? The floor is yours, whichever one wants to begin, that's fine.
I'll start. We are noticing some increased improvement, I mean, for us, the big area to take a look at is that we are dropping or lowering in the number of kids in the warning failing category, which moves kids to the needs improvement. Our needs improvement number of kids is still a little higher than I would like it to be, however, it's easier to move kids from that needs improvement range into the proficient range. As you can see, over time, you know, we are making sort of slow and steady improvement. I'm finding that it is extremely helpful, I mean, to mirror what Mrs. Hackett had said, to have the data available to us, both with the MAP scores and the DIBL scores, it really does help us. We are, the data warehouse is invaluable information. What we have done is already printed out the individual student scores on which test questions and types of questions where their answers were incorrect, to then take a look at where you have a number of kids choosing the same wrong answer, what is leading to those kinds of deductions on the part of the kids. We're also planning to, as Mrs. Hackett referred to, cloning the question styles, because it's long been shown that it's not necessarily the computation that's getting the kids to make the errors and the mistakes, it's the type of question and the format of the question. If you take a question and you reword it and just simply give them the computation, they'll score it correctly, but given the format that they're given right now, it's still a little difficult, so that seems to be an area that we need to work on as well. Our ELA, certainly with the Title I and the use of double dosing, has increased our scores there, our math took a little bit of a hit again. So right now, what we have, we will be introducing a morning math program to work with the students on that. We've also had the Study Islands introduce a contest somewhat in a smaller scale than what they're doing at the middle school, where we are rewarding through a treasure chest of prizes, the weekly number, the weekly student won in each classroom at grades three and four that are using it the most, and eventually building that up and making it go a little bit longer with higher stakes. But we've had a remarkable turnaround in the number of students actually using it. We're also using our media center computers for the kids to use the time on at school as well, and that also counts towards their time that they're using the program.
At a Clara Barton School, we've achieved AYP for both mathematics and ELA in the aggregate and for all subgroups. Our grade three scores in reading and math were right around the state average. In grade four in ELA, we had a higher than state average in proficient and advanced, and slightly below the state average in proficient and advanced in math. One of our focus over the coming year will be mathematics. The majority of our fourth grade students scored a needs improvement in math, but lower on the, as Mrs. Fournier said, lower on the warning end than we had been in the past, which would mean the needs improvement would come up. We had also dropped some in the proficient and needs improvement, but again, as Mrs. Dewitzick had said, we're comparing, in some case, apples and oranges, a different group of children, so we can expect the scores to look a little bit different as we go along. Our percent correct earned for multiple choice, open response, and writing prompts went up across the board in fourth grade. In particular, in English Language Arts, that tells me that the work that our teachers have been doing with the fourth grade writing program, focusing on helping our children stay on topic when they're writing, and using correct conventions of writing in their writing, as well as the work that we've done with open response questions has been paying off. Our fourth graders went from being behind the state average in their scores on the writing prompt and open response questions to being above the state average on both, and compared to ourselves, we made some significant jump in the percent of points that we've earned in both of those areas, which is great. In grade three, our percent correct points decreased in ELA in total in multiple choice and open response questions. My perspective on that is it's an absolutely different group of children, this year's third graders than last year's third graders, and again, comparing apples to oranges can be tough. However, in math, we increased our percent of points earned in math in our short answer, which again reflects that work our teachers have been doing on writing and writing in the content areas, so where the children have had to express their answer and how they got that answer, they were able to do that much better than they had been in the past. Our plans for the coming year are to continue to focus on the law composition, the topic development, using the fourth square writing prompt, and to focus on open response questions K through four. We've got our kindergarten teachers focusing on staying on topic, not necessarily in writing, but in conversations, that when we're talking about Halloween and someone says, "My dad's feet smell," does that fit with what we're talking about? Let's try and stay with our topic. To when we're writing a couple of sentences in first grade, "I like to ride my bike in the fall, apples taste great," does that go together, and increasing complexity as we go up in the grade. Title I services have begun at Clara Barton School this year, and with Mrs. Daly, we decided to focus our Title I services at Clara Barton on mathematics, because that is the area in which we have the most improvement to make. So we have two Title I TAs working in grades one through four, small group, whole class, some brief pullouts focusing on mathematics and mathematics concepts. Title I morning math program is going to begin tomorrow, three days a week, about thirty minutes before school starts, for children to get an extra dose of those basic facts and some drill and practice and basic skills. And we will continue our MAP testing in grades three and four to determine student strengths and weaknesses in relation to the frameworks and address our weaknesses through instruction. The thing I, one of the things I truly like about the MAP testing is that each time we test with MAP, all of the strands and standards are tested, unlike when we have MCAS, and they're not all tested all of the time, we can get a consistent picture of where we are across the board and not have to guess, okay, how are we doing on that one that wasn't tested last year on MCAS? And we're looking to increase our Tier Two supports, and by that I mean supports for kids who aren't quite making it in the regular curriculum, but aren't special needs, aren't disabled, what can we provide for those children to help them improve their reading skills and their math skills? And those would include supplemental reading materials, supplemental math materials, instructional practices that we can offer our teachers to use with their children. We too have begun our Study Island weekly competition for hours in place, and one of the things that I like that I've seen is that not only are we getting a decent number of hours or time from our students, but the percent correct that the children are getting is decent. The highest, the children who spend the most amount of time on our scoring between eighty and ninety percent correct, and they're not necessarily the kids you look in the classroom, oh, that must be the one who's getting the eighty or ninety percent correct, so they're working at it as well, they're not just sitting there clicking around to try and get the time to get the prize, but they're really using it for what it's intended to be used for. And to address something that you've all been speaking about earlier, tomorrow at noon, the state is going to release a new MCAS score indicator, a growth index, which will be comparing kids of the same grade in the same year and their improvement from one year to the next, so that rather than comparing apples to oranges, we're comparing apples to apples, so if I scored a two-ten in eighth grade on MCAS, and I, my improvement index is compared to everybody else in the state who scored a two-ten last year, and I will find, did I score as well as the average, better than average, less than average, and do the same for schools as well? So school with an average score of X will be compared to schools with that average score last year, and our level of growth will be compared to other schools in the state with those similar scores, regardless of the demographic data, so they're not going to peel out, okay, these were Spitz kids who scored that, or Title I kids who scored that, it's just, that's what they scored, and here's our improvement index. The indication that we got at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, that it wouldn't be part of AYP, but they were going to consider the growth index when considering whether or not to place a school in status or not, so if a school happens to be low scoring but high improvement, it says something about us, about the school, that they're doing something right and the scores are improving greatly. The flip side of that, though, is if I score close to perfect one year, it's hard to improve on that for the next year. So I think that data will be something else that can be added to our arsenal of information that we have to demonstrate that, yes, we are making progress, and yes, our children are improving from year to year, and avoid the comparison of apples to orange. We've also, I don't want to speak from a stitch of your hand, but I know I'm part of the- the group, but I guess, we're working on a grant this year that will provide the structure for us to put our MAP data into the data warehouse, so we'll be able to pull that data out together much more easily and compare MAP scores and MCAS scores, and whether MAP is a good predictor.
Well, that's wonderful. Any comments, concerns for our elementary? You must have just presented so well. Well, I want to thank you, because I think it's probably very hard, I think, for third and fourth graders, because you're really just doing the foundation work. So we appreciate what you do for them. And I know it is just their beginning scores, but we will look at them as we go forward, so not too heavy on them. But thank you both very much. Mr. Peterson?
Well, we're still on the MCAS. Where do we stand with Project Coffee? Could we get a report from there? Because every year we get hammered for the low scores that are included or inclusive with Oxford, when 70% of the students are not from Oxford and go elsewhere to graduate, but they do accrue against our MCAS scores, and I'd like a report there this year, please. Well, in advance before graduation, so we're not sitting there waiting for someone that needs to make up MCAS in February.
Okay, we'll put that on for, we'll go through those other forms then, absolutely. All right, at this time, could we go into Mr. Donace? Would you like to give a presentation on our building maintenance? Requested you to come.
Hopefully, I know how to run it.
Well, Neil's here, so if he, that's okay.
He also said I should turn it to you, but I haven't been able to share this with some of my customers, too.
Can I see? Can we see? We're good, so you're good. Yeah, I think we're good.
Could you, Mr. Nugent, could you kill the light, please? The front quadrant, we've got only like a half a screen. Thank you. It's a little better.
The one thing I had to brief, though, in the last time I spoke to you, is how the department has evolved. When I first started working here, the town manager and superintendent of the school directed my activities, all of the administrative support was coming out of the DPW office. So bill pay, payroll, all those functions were being taken care of by the DPW. In effect, the facility was a division of the DPW. Under my position, I had two full-time maintenance techs and a part-time junior clerk within my office. As of August of this year, I lost my parachute. I'm a standalone department, so I kept complete control of my budget. I also take care of all the payables, and in a small sense, I do some billings, because the Woodward School and the community center, I bill them for custodial work, and the Woodward School, I bill them for maintenance efforts. We did a little study into the lease and found out that they, the WCAC had been taking advantage of a good situation and weren't paying for their maintenance. That's since been corrected. Also, in that time, I took on four full-time custodians to take care of town hall, library, community center, senior center, police headquarters, Woodward School, and North Fire Station. I've still had my two full-time maintenance techs, and my clerk is now full-time also. This is the same issued statement that I had developed when I realized the department didn't have an issued statement, so it's a little tough to do your job when you don't know what it's supposed to be. The areas of responsibility haven't changed much since last year. General maintenance, take care of all the assets and make sure that they maintain equipment in a safe and operational condition. Equipment repair, whenever possible, we try to take care of repairs in-house. Saves a tremendous amount of money, also gives us better access to the systems and a lot less coordinating efforts, trying to get outside contractors to come in, schedule them, and make them aware of the nature of what's going on in a particular building and be sensitive to that.
You say in-house, is that done through your four personnel, or is maintenance done through the highway or the DPW part of it and billed back? How's that cost it out?
My maintenance techs will handle most of the repair work.
Your own staff does most of the repair work that you can do before you contract out, or go to the DPW for any services?
That's correct.
Okay, so that comes out of your budget, then?
Yes.
Or our budget?
Preventive maintenance, and that's something that was grossly lacking when I first started with this. To do the, what the manufacturer recommends as good PM on the equipment, changing filters, checking the belts, changing batteries. There's small jobs in some cases, but they pay a big dividend in preventing breakdowns. We'll see that, how that works a little bit later. And then custodial services, which is a, that I picked up on the town side of the buildings. The last time I briefed you, this is what the box score looked like. I had done 500, written 555 orders, and 470 were then completed. At the end of the last month, the number jumped to pretty close to 2,500 orders, and our backlog still stays around the same. I keep about, that's roughly a month's worth of work. Again, when I first briefed you, the division between the school side and the town side was up and down, up and down, and broke out to about 50% of total amount of work orders. And as it kept going, it still stays the same. One month will do more for the schools, the next month will do more for the town buildings. Although the number of jobs that we're doing for the town buildings is going up, because some of the PM orders that are being done on the town side, I'm tracking, but the same types of PMs are being done in the schools by custodial staff. For instance, fire extinguisher inspections, emergency lights, things of that nature. I have to use my staff to do that on the town side. The school side has a goodly amount of custodians that can take care of that, those types of jobs. So the distribution of work orders back to, when I briefed you the last time, and as it is now, it hasn't changed much. This bad boy right here is this building. Unfortunately, we're not getting moved. It's still eating a tremendous amount of effort to keep this place going. Like I said, just strictly based on the number of orders, it breaks out 53% of them are for the town buildings and 47 are for the school buildings. But if I look at money that is being expended, and the only way I can look at that, given the tools that I have right now as far as tracking finance within my department, I can look at money that was expended for parts and for external contractors. The school side absorbs a significant amount of money, more than the town side does, just based on the buildings. The school buildings themselves, again, the high school, middle school, with the former high school, you'll see when I look at the town side, any building that said "high school" on it at one time, takes a lot of effort to keep it fixed. Barton and Chaffey School are almost identical, and then the Project Coffee and Central Office buildings don't eat much, they don't put their feet in the trough at all, they leave room for the others. If you want to look at dollar-wise, Barton School was about $11,000 spent, Chaffey $14,000, Middle School $24,000, the high school $55,000, and Project Coffee and the Central Office each $2,000. Distribution by types of work orders, that was the last time I had briefed you. And we had, at that time, established a PM program, and it was developing slowly. And as you go around, the loop, heating, heating or HVAC issues are the number one thing, lighting, plumbing, which you'd probably find within your own household maintenance budget. As of the end of September, the PMs are taking over as being more and more of the types of work that we do. But again, it's still the same, HVAC, lighting, and plumbing, just the basics that people come to expect. The work order trend for service work orders is slowly going down. They keep decreasing the number of service work orders, because that's, when something is physically broken, we get an order to come in and fix it. The PM work orders are on the uprise on the other side. And if you hold it then, as the PMs go up, the service work orders go down. I'm going to take partial credit for having predicted this correctly last time I spoke to you, because I said it was going to happen in May, where we'd have, we'd be doing more service work, more PMs than service work. Well, I was right, it was, it is in May that that happened, except it was this May, not last May. But the upshot of that is, because we're doing more and more PM work, we're also doing more work orders per month. Reason for that is, when you're doing a PM work order, you know exactly what tools, what parts, and what job you're going to be doing. So all that stuff is loaded on the trucks, the guys go out, they do the job, and it's done. And now, we'll go over some of the things that I see as issues within the school system that need to be addressed. Three out of the five boilers in this building need to be, burners in the boilers need to be replaced. We replaced two this past summer, and during their cleaning, the remaining three also need new boilers, burners. That work will be completed at the beginning of this, next month.
Why is that? This building's only eight years old, and these boilers are shot already? They're supposed to be the best boilers on the market.
They are a very high-efficiency boiler, which means they're a condensing boiler, so they've got a very high efficiency rating. But you pay for that efficiency rating by generating an acid liquid within the burner itself. And the burner life is somewhere between six and eight years, and that's where we are.
For what, six to?
Six to eight years.
Six to eight years.
Per burner. Roof leak at the high school and an OMS. Thank you to Mr. Matthew, he was able to do something that I've been trying unsuccessfully to do for quite some time. He did finally corner somebody from Greenwood Industries who had done the roof, and they put us in touch with the manufacturer of the roof, and the warranty on it is still good till 2018. So I've already had them come out once to start addressing the issues here at the high school. The middle school, the roof is beyond repair, and it's just a, right now, it's just a matter of patching what we can, what we can find. But the condition of the roof is so poor that tracking the leak is almost impossible, because it could be, the actual leak could be occurring on one end of the building, and the water is appearing on the opposite side of the building. Because once it gets underneath the membrane, it follows the deck and then finds another spot where it can get in. So it comes in through a penetration in the membrane in one area, and then leaks in the building in another entirely unrelated area. So in a lot of cases, it's just a matter of trying to, you know, making circles around where the leak presents, and hoping that you can find something to patch. Basketball goals at both OHS and OMS should have safety straps installed on them. This is an issue that was raised by our insurance carrier, MYA. There are eight here at the high school, and there's six at the middle school. And shortly after that recommendation was made, there was a catastrophic failure of one of the winches. Fortunately, nobody got hurt. But these safety straps work very much like a seatbelt. They have an inertia lock on them, and if during the process of either raising or lowering the basketball goals, there's a failure of the main winch system, these straps will stop the rest of that goal from swinging down. And given the fact that they're made out of metal, and depending on where they are in their arc, they can develop quite a bit of power as they swing down. $850 a piece to have them installed, plus another $400 for a man lift. The rear section of boiler number two at the Chaffey School is leaking. This is a problem that happened at the Barton School a year or two ago, somewhere just before I started working. I work with the manufacturer, and I'm buying one rear section, they're giving us another rear section, so I'll have the two rear sections of those boilers on hand. And I've contracted with Energy Efficiency Services to replace the one that is in fact cracked and leaking right now. That work will be done when the boiler sections come in. The automatic temperature control system in this building is in dire need of an upgrade. The software that was installed with the original system, none of the upgrades were ever done on it. So after the course of seven years, it's very much like a home computer. If you don't keep putting the patches, the upgrades, the whatever into it, it doesn't take a very long time before the software becomes so outdated and the fixes that have been developed as the systems have been run haven't been applied. So they, you end up with some serious problems. Fortunately, there's been some tremendous improvements on it. Mr. Wells, they're great about expectations. The system can work within, you know, within a certain degree of accuracy, but if you go from classroom to classroom, where one room is set to cool, and this one's set to heat, and back and forth and back and forth, the unit, the system will say, okay, we're going to satisfy the first call. So it'll try, if the first one's for cooling, it tries to cool everybody down, and then it goes after the heat. So it just keeps going back and forth, back and forth, chasing its own tail. Some of the upgrades that are available for the software would allow locking some of these, some of the these, some of these settings so that kids can't play with the thermostats and just walk by and swing them one way or the other. It would also give me the opportunity to be able to look at the system and make adjustments or do diagnosis from my office rather than having to come here when there is a problem. Right now, I've got two estimates and they range from 11.5 to 13.5 for the necessary controllers, software and program to get that done. The generator enunciator panel at the Chafee School hasn't worked since I started working here. It's not that the generator doesn't work, it's just the remote panel in the building doesn't register. The contractor that we had doing service on the generators had promised repeatedly to come up with a proposal or an estimate to repair the problem and it just never happened. This past fall, I changed companies to do the service work on the Towns 14 generators at a significant savings over the former contractor. And as a result of their first go-around, I've got a stack that's equal or greater than this of problems that they found at a lot of the generators. I've issued a PO for the company to come in and diagnose what exactly the problem is so that that panel within the building will work the way it's intended to work. But again, let me stress, the generator itself is capable of doing its job, it's just not communicating with the internal portion. And we're going to the generators again. The generator at the Barton School needs a new battery charger. We tried unsuccessfully to use a solar charger on that one when the original charger had failed. And it just doesn't generate enough electricity to keep the battery up, sort of that's ready when it's called for. That also is going to be repaired before the end of next month. All the exterior doors of Project Coffee need replacing. They're metal doors. Most of them, the frames are actually rusted away and they're rotten. The bottoms, they're splitting at the tops. The door shells are failing. This may be a good project for the students there. The pulls doors out, you would save a little bit of money on transportation costs too because they wouldn't have to go anywhere to get this thing done. I'd be more than willing to work with them and the staff to try to get this accomplished. But we've patched them and repatched them and there's nothing left to patch. So it becomes a security issue after a while. A good-sized person could crash one of those doors and just knock it right out of the There are multiple fluorescent lights at the rear of the gym of the auditorium that are out. These are service lights only because they're fluorescent lights, they are right up on the roof deck. The problem there is, I can't figure out a way to get at them to change them. Because those lights were obviously put up well before the screens, the theatrical lighting and all the other equipment that go with the theater. There's physically no way to get a ladder, a lift or anything else up to those lights. So that one, I don't know exactly what I'm going to do about it. Okay, again, in the auditorium, over the course of the summer, the concrete floor finish is peeling, which is something that's not unusual with concrete floors that haven't been properly sealed or were finished before they're adequately dry. And foot traffic will pull up the paint and it becomes especially bothersome when you have high humidity or you get changes in temperature. With that, it's an air-conditioned space and it goes into night set-back, the floor warms up. When it goes into cooling, it cools down and now the floor starts to sweat and it also pushes the paint right off the floor. That could be a very time-consuming job. Maybe not a lot of money for material, but it would take, it's going to be a time-consuming job because all of the seating's going to have to be removed in order to scrape what's there for paint, properly etch the floor, dry it and then apply a coating. Now, this word of the day for everybody, you will be tested. The incandescent paint, which is fireproofing paint, at the three canopies on this building, I'm sure everybody's noticed how lovely it looks as it hangs and it's cracked. The reason that paint was put on there is because there's no sprinklers under those canopies. So it's a fireproofing paint. In the event of a fire under the canopy, it would allow a certain amount of protection at a certain length of time before the canopy itself would catch fire. Hopefully enough time for everybody to exit the building. The paint itself is, the fireproof paint is very expensive. And again, it should have lasted a lot longer than that. And usually, when you have paint that peels in that fashion, it's poor circulation that was the cause of it. The controls for the compressor at the OMS school, the controls compressor has to be rebuilt. It leaks oil pretty badly. It still runs, it still maintains air pressure so that the control system does work. And depending on where we stand with the SBA and improvements that we're anticipating to get done at the school, I don't know if the expense of replacing or taking the compressor offline and having it rebuilt is worth the effort. So for right now, it maybe consumes a little bit more oil than it should. And Dave White's budget for speedy drives is a little higher than it should be, but it does an adequate job maintaining air pressure to keep the controls working. Another recommendation by the insurance carrier, the weight training room downstairs, it's got flooring much like this. They claim that it would be much safer to have a sports flooring, a half-inch or heavier rubberized matting, one to protect the floor, which is the insurance company's biggest concern. But my concern is, in the event that these types of floors getting wet, they become slippery. You know, if a student, athlete is working with weights, he loses his footing while he's going through a repetition, he could, he or she could be seriously injured. So that's something that would be, if somebody could come up with the funding to buy the flooring, I'd be more than happy to have my guys install it. The window AC units at both Chafee and Barton School are quickly coming to the end of their useful life cycle. And there are quite a few of those units. We've had a couple of problems with them, some we can fix and we have, and others are just tired. And lastly, this is more a department request, but it would be applied mostly from the school, it's the only outbuilding. My department doesn't have an electric scissors lift. And it's extremely difficult and time-consuming and sometimes downright unsafe to work on lights, HVAC equipment that's up in the spaces in the auditoriums, the auditoriums and the We do have a little lift here at this building, but it needs to be set up, planted. You work in one spot, you come down, you pick the legs up, roll it forward, replant it, go up. Takes a lot of time. An electric scissors lift would be able to get a lot more work done and a lot safer. And that's all I have for this go-around.
I'm pretty depressed.
I'm glad your list ended on that one, huh? I was like, oh. If you got page two, I was like, oh. Any questions or concerns for Mr. Jones? I think, yes, Mr. Peterson?
Thank you. I requested this, that you come in to see where we stood. And for the motoring public, your customers as well as ours, where does your budget stand and how much of an increase did you get this year?
Was level funded, which worked out to a cut since I had to add 20, a janitor, a custodian for 28 hours at the new police headquarters. So my level funded budget is less than adequate.
I've gotten numerous calls over that and into a few arguments of it as well. And I printed the Towns budget for a few people the other night and I'm glad that you... The other question is on PMs. Now, PMs cover things, I understand that, but how much, I've seen warrants go through that we've had to sign for parts, for extra services, et cetera. How much difference is there of those? And you seem to be getting most of your work orders under control through the PMs that covers your help, your parts, whatever. Is there a lot outstanding other than that and is most of it controlled by the PMs at this point?
It's almost, it's almost 50/50. Still, there's a lot of service orders that get generated. And in all reality, you can only chase those two lines. The PMs, you can only drive up so far until you're just making work. And the number of service calls will only drop to some level where it's manageable, but things are going to break, no matter how good a PM program you have in place.
So service calls, if it's not an emergency or something that has to be called in that needs to be done within a reasonable period of time, we get to build a difference for everything else then, right? As far as parts, et cetera?
As it stands right now, there is actually no billing going on.
It just comes out of your budget.
It comes out of my budget.
So there's no additional at this point in time to us or the town on either side of the government? You're taking everything out of your budget?
Correct.
We'll applaud you. I think you've done a great job since you've been here, sir. And it's been a real benefit to us. And I think we may be calling on you, I have some things that I want to go into executive session over tonight, but I'd like to see your expansion, our benefit and the Towns' benefit. I think there's some other co-op we can do and we'll get back to you, sir. I think you've done a fantastic job.
Yep, I think the committee thanks you, Mr. Jones. And thank you for the presentation, it was eye-opening.
As usual.
As usual, yeah. And keep us posted.
But we know where we stand with you, at least the last two years. These reports have been excellent.
Wonderful.
Very exceptional. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go in and, for our subcommittees, it was my book. Student rep, I know you're here. Come on up, Nicole. I know you've been very, very busy. Our student rep's very busy today, multitasking. So we are going to ask you to jump in and give us a scoop of what's happening at OHS. And you look lovely.
Thank you, thank you.
There's a lot going on, isn't there?
There is. Just right before I walked in, we just finished our first Halloween event for student council. We did an elementary activity where we had trick-or-treating around the school. And then in the cafeteria, we set up different crafts and different games for the students. And we're starting to begin our turkey run, which is where we all get together in groups and each make a basket of a turkey dinner for the homeless or needy people around our community. For sports, fall sports are coming to an end, except football. Football goes till November, but we just had senior night outside for soccer. Our best buddies group, which is where a student is paired up with a student with intellectual disabilities, is beginning. And our party is this Thursday where the buddy's parents and the peer buddy's parents come and we all get together and make pumpkins. And it's really fun and a really great group and I'm involved with that too. And what else do I have? I have notes here. Oh, the band on Thursday and the theater department are holding their Halloween event on Thursday where they're putting together a play that Mr. Baggett talked about earlier that they wrote and produced by themselves. And I think that's it for me.
You did really well.
Thank you.
I know your whole group, they all multitask and you've got everything. It seems like tonight we've got a lot going on. The whole week is now going to be busy.
It's crazy. And, oh, senior skit, that's what's next for the juniors. We have senior skit, senior breakfast are this Friday. So we're all racing to get that done. It's just busy around Oxford High School.
Well, we like that. We like to see busy at Oxford High. And we thank you for coming in. I know it was hard for you to come back.
I know, I had to leave.
Oh, no, we appreciate it. You do a good job on the other end too there. So thank you very much, Nicole.
Thank you.
At this time, the superintendent of schools?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to begin by paying tribute to the administrative team that you see in front of us. This district and all school districts make up, are made up of a tremendous amount of moving parts. And everybody out there does more than their share, is here early, is here late and is dedicated 100% of their time to the education of our children. And I think from the reports to Mrs. Baker's expertise in special ed and Mrs. Daly's implementation of Title I and Mr. Trahan always being available, I think 36/7 to help us out is a testament to how far we've come. We know we have more to go, but we have the right people who do not need any motivation from anyone. They are professional self-starters who dedicate each and every day. And I just wanted to say to all of them, thank you very much for everything. It's a lot of fun coming to work, let me tell you that. Just a couple of quick housekeeping notes. I know that some of you who are trying to follow us, Channel 13 still has the bulletin board in the scroll. However, we have some equipment that we're waiting for. I believe it's a switch. So for now, Channel 11 is replaying the meetings. As soon as the equipment is updated, everything will be back onto Channel 13. A quick update, the custodial contract is being signed as we speak. And as soon as I get the paperwork back, that is for this year only, I will give it to the committee for their signatures. And we are in negotiations currently with the instructional aids and hope to have that wrapped up very soon. I'd like to have Mr. Wells come forward, please, because we had a lot of congratulations last week. I know that if you saw the website, I wanted to note them. Carol Davis, who's one of our first grade teachers at Chafee, was given the Worcester County Teacher of the Month Award, which is a terrific recognition program sponsored by WSRS and County Bank and Big Y. And that was a treat to see her good work recognized. And we all got the great news from the Department of Ed regarding the middle school making AYP. And we also found out that we had 37 students who qualified for the John and Abigail Adams scholarships. And we're going to put their names on the scroll if they are not already up. And I was just wondering if Mr. Wells could read them so that we could give them some recognition.
Just for those people that may not be familiar, the John and Abigail's Adams Scholarship, this year there were approximately 17,000 recipients throughout the Commonwealth. It is an eight semester tuition-free scholarship that's given from the state. And I'm very proud to say that approximately just under one-third of the students of the class that took this test did receive the scholarship. And please hear me as I read their names, I think they certainly deserve what limelight we can give them. Joshua Bernacki, Morgan Boyne, Nicholas Buccheri, Cristo Shantavong, Stephanie Shantavong, Mohamed Shudre, Caitlin Corey, Matthew Denham, Chelsea Dickout, Kevin Donovan, Justina Dubsky, Kelly Foot, Jennifer Freeland, Janay Gallard, Jason Green, Jonathan Hill, Nicole Holmberg, Tara Jarobski, Kelly Kirkland, Eric Nutelsky, Heather Lamarche, Catherine Lavoy, Andrea Lawless, Jane Parker, Laurel Pitco, Neil Riley, Teresa Rivera, Jessica Rodea, Patrick Ryan... Jane Parker, Laurel Pitko, Neil Riley, Teresa Rivera, Jessica Rodea, Patrick Ryan, Pashalia Sciottis, Jeffrey Stanmeyer, Matthew Thompson, Chelsea White, Danielle White, Heather Williams, Joshua Woods, Tiara Yanian. And that is the 37 students. And once again, in order to be chosen for the scholarship, you must receive proficient on at least one of the two TASCA or math and at least advanced on the either. Or on the opposite, I'm sorry. So congratulations to all them. And thank you very much for the opportunity to present them this evening.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Himmelberger, you mentioned just quickly that they would be on our cable. Can we put them on, in the internet somewhere on the high school, too?
I believe we can do that, absolutely.
Just, I think that's a great accomplishment for them.
Yep, absolutely.
Could you carry that further, Madam Chair? A letter of congratulations to each one individually from us?
Certainly. The motion to do that?
Yes.
Okay, second? Can I go? Cough a vote?
I would like to inclusive...
Can I just cough a vote for one minute?
Yes. I was going to amend that, inclusive to Carol Davis and the others that also received theirs.
Thank you. Yep, to both of them, yep. We'll amend that to do that, that's fine.
Just a couple more things.
Please, go.
In your packet, Operation Santa, which is Sunday, December 6th. And again, sponsored by the Police, Fire, EMS and Women's Club. And I believe they're going to do it in the same format as last year, which was a little bit of a change from years gone by. But already having a huge advance registration, so we look forward to that. In your packet also, I mentioned Ethics Reform. I tried to take the high road. Front page of the TNG today did a pretty good job of describing the difficulties and the time and money it's going to take to implement this. However, it is the law of the land, so we will comply. The short of it is that every municipal employee, coach, parent volunteer, substitute, and all elected board members across the state need to comply with online ethics training and receive a summary of the ethics law. And obviously, this was snuck in at the last minute in the end of the legislative period in the midst of a 46-page bill along with open meeting law and pension reform. But it's going to take us and everybody across the state a lot of time and money to comply with this. And I will indeed keep you posted as we go through this. The last I have for you is a little bit of an update on H1N1. And once again, the media is not helping us. But the bottom line is that we have actually improved our absentee rate from last week where the elementary schools and the middle school were hit fairly hard on Monday and Tuesday. And attendance as of today was below 10% in all buildings, with the exception of the middle school at 11%. And if we adhere to those numbers, we'll be okay. And I have again pleaded with parents not to send your child to school if he or she is sick and presents all of the symptoms. Because that is the worst thing for the education of all of the rest of the students. So if we can get the cooperation there, we hope that we'll be able to get through this with minimal disruption. We are going to track the attendance every day to see if there are any trends coming across any of the grades. But certainly, the goal is to minimize. And I think if we can keep the cooperation, we should be in good shape. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson, do you want to comment on something?
Yeah, a couple of yours, Superintendent. The H1N1, just with the rash of problems Grafton just had and the reports daily, the doctors are not testing and not reporting out for H1N1. It's just simply being done for flu. Where do we stand with that as far as the requirements and still a requesting of non-attendance situations?
Right. A very good point. I think some people saw the Department of Health and the Board of Health here on last Wednesday. That was a walkthrough for logistics because the high school is dispensing the pandemic site for the town of Oxford. So if and when the vaccines become available, they will be, the plan is to dispense them at Oxford High School for the residents of the town, preferably on a Saturday. And we hope that that's how it comes to pass. You are correct, Mr. Peterson. The reporting requirements have been lifted from the spring when everyone had to be tested and everything had to be reported. Now, all of the information directs us to treat it as a seasonal flu. And indeed, the testing has come back that it is no worse, it's no more virulent, H1N1, than a regular type A influenza. Having said that, we take the same precautions that we should take with any flu. I think that, again, the numbers that they are putting up on the media for hospitalizations, for deaths, do not quite tell the whole story when you look at it in context. We really are facing a typical year. And unfortunately, in an average flu season, about 35,000 people do die. That's been year in, year out. I think that, you know, if we, again, if we take the precautions and again, if we do not send sick children into school, we minimize our chances for disruption.
The other issue is I asked you to check on, and I know you reported exactly, basically, the way it's written as far as the Ethics Reform is concerned. But have they made any provisions for anyone that is tested through their job, through other sources, that have to report annually or every semi-annually on Ethics or the Privacy Acts?
That I don't know specifically. I'm only going by what I have been told. As long as you do it somewhere, I think you do comply with the law. But we have to, each town has a, probably a town clerk who is designated to, you know, compile all of this documentation and to make sure that the summaries are handed out. And now with new hires, you have to do that within 30 days. So it'll be interesting.
Because I know the selectmen addressed it at their meeting two weeks ago. And I don't know if Lori's gotten back any answers that they requested from her either on those. Because pretty much everybody takes one at their job or some other situation as far as, as an example, us elected officials are concerned.
Right.
Not necessarily the rest of staff or anything else of your staff. But they made no provisions or no...
No, I believe that the law states, that was written for July 1st that went into effect on September 29th, is that everybody, about 400,000 of us in the state, have to take this specific training. And until the State Ethics Commission changes the content to make it specific for different groups, we have the one set of questions that needs to be taken. The only, the only help they have given us is that we can apparently give the training on a PowerPoint, in an auditorium, to a large number of people and then use a sign-in sheet to take care of that requirement. So that's probably what we will opt to do.
I think, Mr. Peterson, we can just say that we will be continuing this. Mr. Holmberger and I will discuss how we can do it as a committee and make sure where our obligations are met also.
Not to belabor it, but the school committee, or the school committee association had got legislation passed. And every new committee member, everybody come in and have to take X amount of training and have to take those Ethics and Privacy trainings all at the same time.
It's just beginning. Fun is just beginning, so we will keep everybody posted how we'll do it. Yep. Anything else, Mr. Himmelberger?
That is all, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matthew?
Speaking of the fun beginning, let's talk finances.
Great time to jump in, yeah.
Included in the packet was the monthly report. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions about the breakdowns of dollars. Really, the big issue right now, as you may or may not be aware, certainly members of the audience are acutely aware, on October 15th, the governor announced revenue projections were exceeded for the FY10 initial budget. He has announced reductions of $600 million from that initial revenue projection. As a result, and as the administration members in the audience are aware, we've put into place a spending limitation plan with the uncertainty of the state's revenue pictures. We're not really sure where things are going to stand. The governor should release planned expenditure reductions this week, in which case we can react certainly to those once they're announced. But nobody is very clear about where the $600 million is going to come from. I think it's pretty well established that local aid will need to be touched in some form or fashion. Whether or not that includes Chapter 70, it's unknown at this point in time. It certainly could include circuit breaker, which is not considered local aid, but rather a grant from the state. Those reductions, we've already been hit to the tune of about 32% of our projected reimbursement rates. Previously, it had been at 72% for FY10. It's down to 40%. That may go a little lower. And this is all the first stage of what may be two stages of budget reductions inside of FY10, as well as pretty certain reductions for FY11. At the Association of Finance Committee meetings, Finance Committees meeting held this past Saturday, the talk was possibly 10% this year, 10% next year. How that gets divvied out between local aid and Chapter 70, it's unknown. But those are significant numbers. So we're really asking everybody out there not only to be educators, but also money managers. It's not new, of course. Last year, the district was in somewhat the same shape. But I think it's going to hit us even harder this year because of the accumulated effect of reduced spending, of reduced spending. You can only use the same nickel so many times before it's really gone. So stay tuned. We'll certainly have more information about the current year picture as it becomes clearer. But it's not going to be a fun remaining eight months, nor will it be a fun FY11 budget development process.
Thank you. Mr. Matthew, you mentioned, I know in previous years, it's been a while because we've been, everybody's been so good fiscally. This school committee has frozen our budget. Are you recommending that? Or you feel confident now that you are all watching this budget?
I think the, I think the best way of phrasing it is really a spending limitation plan. We don't want to freeze money because there certainly are things that we may want or need to do. On the other hand, we have, obviously, the questions of revenues. We haven't begun to even go through the heating season yet. And until that happens, having a limitation in effect, I think, is the best approach.
You feel confident? Thank you. I appreciate that because we certainly were on top of it. Mr. Spitz?
Yes, I just want to reiterate basically what he just said. I think it's way too early in the season to even consider that. I don't think we should be talking about a freeze. There are too many things that we have to look forward to, the heating, never mind the cuts. How much was the last cuts that were actually made to the state? I mean, how many millions was that that they did? How many billions, I should say, that first set of cuts that took place last year? How much did that, the governor cut? Does anybody remember? It was pretty, it was a lot more than $600 million. So this really is a drop in the bucket in comparison to the first wave of cuts. And I do understand out there looking at local aid to be part of those cuts. But we shouldn't panic yet until we see those results. We certainly should not go into a freeze situation until we see those results, until we get some of the heating bills. And I would certainly not vote for one at this point.
Oh, I don't think we should, but I think we should talk about that to do our job to throw that out. Yes, Mr. Peterson?
That was the, that was the tail end, Mr. Spitz, and the nine C cuts and things. This $600 million is only the first quarter of this year.
I understand that.
So it's a long way to go from the state standpoint of view also. Because you're looking at another $200 million probably this month alone, which will put you well over 800, 800 million, closer to higher figures what I see daily coming in through our offices. But that was only the first quarter of this fiscal year.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Peterson.
But I, too, agree with you. I'm not ready to freeze anything because hopefully, we're supposed to have better fuel costs. I don't see a gas and everything just jumped up again, but we'll see what happens.
We do, we do have lock, rates locked in for utilities. So that, I think, will help. But until we start seeing the bills, until we know what the weather is, at least through December, you know, a cautious approach is the best approach.
So we've, we've got nothing from the town as far as any definitive cuts right now. You're locking yourself in and looking at security measures at this point in time through our own system.
Exactly. Okay, exactly. In addition to the $600 million that was announced, there's been discussed at least $400 million in possible Medicaid expenses that will not get reimbursed through the federal government. So that's why I say this is round one. And discussion is that there may be a round two later on in the year.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. From our school committee members, Mrs. Koonin?
Just a couple of things. Thank you, Mr. Himmelberger, for the absentee rates and how those are going with Grafton closing these past couple of days. I was wondering how, you know, what we were looking at. I just want to say congratulations to the John and Abigail Scholarship recipients. Well done. Great to hear that almost a third of the class, so that's pretty significant. And just to kind of keep on the agenda for at some point, I know, Mr. Wells, we're going to talk about EP scores. If we can just kind of have that on the agenda at some point.
Mr. Spitz?
I just have a nice piece of fluff. I like fluff.
Fluff guy.
Rick Rico, a teacher here at the high school, had invited me to his Rocket Club launching this past week. And it was something I had a ball watching the kids do, I really did. I want to thank Mr. Rico for doing this because he does this on his own. He's not paid to do it. This is, this is a dedicated teacher who goes above and beyond what's expected of him. And these kids had an absolute ball. And we had half the, actually, the kids that were supposed to be practicing sports were all watching this, too. And it was really cool. And I just wanted to thank him for his involvement with this and with the kids. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Just to reiterate, Legislative Committee meeting is November 5th. And we are taking up some of this issues such as the new Ethics Bill. If anybody has anything to me before the 5th, please, that you'd like taken up. Davis taken care of. I have, Mr. Denaeus is still here. I hate to even address this issue. I have one more issue to add to his list, right? And this somehow, if you could look at it, I don't know what we can do or if we can do anything. The fall's the appropriate time to do it. We kind of haphazardly threw a softball field in over there. The drainage is horrific. It doesn't drain at all. It rains and you sit with about six to eight inches or a foot of water as a puddle on top of it. And then when they sweep it off, it just erodes more sand with it. And you keep throwing sand back on it, but it doesn't do any good because when you shovel it off, sweep it off, the hole just gets bigger. And then instead of six inches, now we're collecting eight inches of water. And it's not draining. I know that had been looked at at one time. And I think the cost or estimates at that time were about $400 to $4,800. But I don't know what we can do, if we can do anything or find appropriations for it somewhere now yet this fall. Before we go into another season, please, at least look at it, come back with some sort of report, please.
Anything else?
No, the, well, he addressed the scroll. And our tape is on Channel 11. But on the scroll, there's, I don't know if it can be done until they're done with whatever they're doing on the updates there. But there's, I guess, what I would call a lot of fluff, Mr. Spitz, that should be taken off, some things that haven't been updated for probably a couple of years. Take a look at the scroll and have somebody relook at those or find new pieces to put on or something. At least update it like we're using it instead of just the same old one bus statement that's been on there for two years, as an example.
We'll look at the fluff, Mr. Peterson.
Just update the whole scroll, period.
Hey, Bill, you want a test? There you go.
Use it or something instead of just the same five things scrolling there, that the engine needs somebody or the special ed needs somebody. And the bus, if you pass a bus, it's a crime, you know? It's been on there for two and a half years. I think we could update some of our...
We'll take a peek at it. How's that?
It's all right.
Anything else? You good?
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it for tonight.
Thank you. Don't be laboring it. I just really want to say on behalf of the school committee, thank you to the administration. I know it's late, it's Monday, and you came in to present your MCAS and all your information. And we really do appreciate it because your information is much more valuable than just your charts. Together, we get a real good idea of what's going on in the building. So we want to thank you all for coming in. And I don't have anything else other than all the congratulations that everybody else has done. So that being done. Our next meeting is going to be November 9th. I will open the floor if anyone has any questions or... Yeah, and I'll run forward. No, being none, I will close the floor. I do, oh, I opened the floor. Did you have something you wanted?
No.
Someone else there to come ask you? No? No, I do have a request for executive session tonight under Chapter 39, subsection 23B, Section 3, which, somewhere I had out my hair, is regarding contract negotiations. Can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Have a second?